Welcome back to the Delnart County Board of Supervisors meeting. We are reconvening after we left off at our 2:00 discussions to now take up our 5:30 timed agenda item, which is a discussion, our continuing set of discussions cannabis workshop to discuss and give direction to staff to help formulate some direction on the potential cannabis ordinance. Joel's been with us for all these discussions. Joel, why don't you kick us off this evening?
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. I think this is the fifth one of these over seven months. And I hope tonight can mark a transition from speaking abstractly about laws to really getting into the nuts and bolts of creating a law. And for that, you know, need the board to narrow the focus. But in moving from talking about laws to making them, I think it's important that we kind of transition this from being me presenting laws to having a broader group of people working on, putting in their bit, offering their specific expertise. And so that's why we have agendized, giving direction for a working group. This is something we talked about the last one, it's something, you know, most every county's done. But I want to actually withhold making that decision or getting that direction for the board until after we talk about our options, because there's different ways to do a working group. And depending on the direction the board wants to go, you know, there might be different things the board wants to do, different direction the board wants to give staff. So with that, let's jump into the ordinance. I separate this out into two sections. So the first one will be about commercial ordinances. These are those options that I promised for the board to vote on. And then there's the personal cultivation regulations that I don't have options to vote on, but I do have a list of things other counties have done that the board can look at, ask questions about, talk about, and if anybody likes them, you know, we can kind of accumulate board input and then come back with those aspects in a more specific ordinance. So these ordinance options, there's four of them. It's going to be a complete ban, an interim ban, legalizing a small amount of cultivation retail, and then a broader legalization. These have been arrived at largely from trying to glean the board's desires, hearing public comment, and talking to staff. They're just starting points, they're suggestions. If the board votes on one and chooses it, it doesn't mean that that's our ordinance, it means that that's what we'll take back to staff and work on. Any comments, any input, anything the board wants to do to remove from one of these options, you know, it's all on the table, we're just looking for as much guidance as possible. The vote is advisory, you're not committed or bound to anything. Any ordinance is going to come back, actual ordinance language to be voted on. Unless it's a complete ban, it's going to go through the planning commission too, so it's going to be vetted through another hearing process. A couple of general things to get out of the way. No matter what the board does, unless the board takes the kind of drastic decision to classify cannabis as agriculture, cannabis will not be protected by the right to farm ordinance. So nobody needs to worry that the cannabis smell nearby is protected as an agricultural smell and isn't a nuisance. It would be a nuisance, just to allay any concerns about that. We would put it in the public nuisance code and enforce it like a nuisance. And if the state issues a permit that's consistent with our ordinance, but then we change our ordinance, it will remove that authorization from the state. They don't have a vested right to continue operating in conflict with our laws. So the board does have the ability to revise and change over time, even after passing. So the option one is a complete ban on commercial cannabis. This would apply in the unincorporated areas. It won't obviously apply in the city or on reservations. The state will issue no licenses, but the personal cultivation and use is still going to be legal, will be untouched by this, right? That'll be the separate ordinance. One of the implications of that is the kind of 215 collective model will also be untouched by this ban, since this ban is a ban on commercial activity and the collective model is not commercial. So just want expectations to be clear, when we're talking about collectives and co-ops and what to do with that, that's something to be addressed under the personal cultivation ordinance, not under this commercial ban. So if we put a ban in now, you know, we still have to do another step if you want to change or limit those medical rights. Option two can serve a lot of the same purposes as that full ban. This is kind of a planning and zoning device, where if you want to halt development, well you consider a proposed change to an ordinance or a plan or a scheme. You do this as an urgency ordinance, it lasts 45 days. You can extend it for 10 and a half months to get to a year, and you can extend it another year. But while you do that, you have to make findings that it's in the public interest, it's protecting the public welfare, and you have to keep working on something, considering something. So, you know, if the board gets to the place where it wants to consider allowing cultivation, but we want to take this to a working group, or we want to do more studying, this is a way to prevent the state from issuing licenses without us banning it. So it's a kind of a happy medium there. This requires four fifths of the board, unlike another, you know, most things require only a simple majority. Option three is, I conceived of this as coinciding with the smallest permit that the state offers, which is the specialty cottage. And then we would do this kind of within those parameters we've talked about, not in the coastal zone, not on ag land, and we do medical only, and allow some retail, probably in commercial and manufacturing zones, so that we get to that threshold required for eligibility for those law enforcement permits. Some commercial, I mean, some retail and some cultivation. Here's the definition of specialty cottage under state law. "It's a combination of natural and supplemental artificial lighting at a maximum threshold to be determined by the licensing authority of 2,500 square feet or less of total canopy sites for mixed light, of 25 mature plants outdoor, 500 square feet or less indoor." We've seen the pictures of those enormous plants, 25 mature plants outdoors could very well be 2,500 square feet. So, you know, that's kind of the size, the range that you're looking at here. That maximum threshold to be determined by the licensing authority, I don't know exactly what kind of threshold of light, natural light versus artificial light is appropriate, that'd be another thing to refer to a working group, or possibly just kind of punting and letting whatever the state licenses decide. Limiting the number of permits, so we know that this isn't going to explode, 10 permits, 20 permits, I don't know what the demand for permits is or how many there would be, that's another thing that staff would find out and a working group could do. When it comes to retail, allowing just enough so there's competition, so the county isn't, you know, a kingmaker of retailers. And then no other activity in between those two points on the distribution. So, you know, anything that's grown here is probably going to travel to Humboldt for testing, manufacturing necessary, and then come back. So you're kind of cutting out that middle portion of the chain. And then number four is more moderate. It looks large, I call it moderate because that's kind of the state median permit, it's up to one acre. And, you know, still keep those restrictions, not in the coastal zone, not on ag. It could be medical or recreational. This is something that would really probably require that temporary ban, because the larger we allow, the more details there are, the more staff would have to grapple with costs and things. But this is kind of the large option that I've included. Hasn't seemed like the board has been really interested in considering on a, you know, maximum scale, as much as you can, you know, get their sequel review. So those are the four options. It's a complete ban, an interim ban, allowing a small amount, allowing a medium amount. It was brought up that a lot of counties have done pilot programs, and that's a way to kind of test the waters, vet the applicant, and see what happens. There's a lot of ways to do this, and a lot of counties do different things, especially with track and trace programs. But for allowing people to cultivate, the only situation I've seen with the RFQ, RFP, requesting people to kind of give their credentials and show why they should, where they're qualified, give letters of recommendation, background checks, and things like that, and then after they're pre-cleared, having them submit proposals, actual kind of business plans, cultivation plans, here's where I'm going to do it, what I'm going to do, and then choose from those. There's a couple cities I've seen do that, I haven't seen any counties do it. It would be an interesting thing, but it would take, it'd be a fairly big project. It's really involved with the growers, and that would be again, something that, to come up with a serious pilot program proposal would be something that I'd want to refer to a working group. There are some issues, like how do you decide who's qualified to grow cannabis? Who in the county is choosing, you know, this person's qualified and that person's not? What's a good proposal after they make it? You know, this can often kind of put us in a position of being in a kind of a partnership. And a lot of the pilot programs I've seen around the state do call it kind of a partnership between industry and the government. And that kind of makes a big investment for the county, once we're choosing who does it, investing time, investing money, we kind of have vested interest in them succeeding. And, you know, for those reasons, the administrative burden is high. So those are things to consider. Whatever option, whatever philosophy the board wants to choose on this, we can always add a pilot program, you know, before we just open it up for permits. And this is something that, I know, I think last time I said I'd come back with a pilot program proposal, I looked at it and it's just complicated. I'd want to run it through a good group of minds before I did that. I want to pause here and talk about these options before we go into reasonable restrictions on personal, because this could be another long conversation. So, you know, this is agendized for an advisory vote. You know, whatever the board wants to do and however the board really wants to express its wishes is what I would take back to a working group. So, do you have any questions for me, or do you want to just jump into it?
Joel, again, thank you for this information. The coastal zone is a no-grown growth area, coastal zone.
The coastal zone is an area that I believe, in talking to staff, is so administratively difficult, it's not worth it, and from what the growers, growing community has said, it's not a good place to grow anyway. So that's kind of why we've driven that kind of administrative line on not considering.
Let's just refer to Delnart County and its coastal zone, which I believe is everything west of the 101, Highway 101.
For the most part.
Which is up in Smith River, that's quite a little chunk of land.
Yeah, it's mostly agricultural.
So you could not grow the cannabis product in this area, according to what you just mentioned.
Right.
Okay, now, the second question I have, and you've given us these four options, if this board does not come to some kind of consensus on choosing an option and leaves it blank, does the state select an option for you?
The state won't select an option. What the state will do is issue its own permits according to its own agenda, with kind of the practical issue that the state isn't going to do sequel review on these permits. So I'm not sure how logistically it would work. They say that they can do it if we're just silent, but they also drafted their regulations for us to do the legwork. So I don't want to tell you they're not going to issue permits, they might, but, you know, there's some issues that would have to be worked out before they do.
And they're a long way from getting there.
I think they are. Yeah.
Chair?
Please.
So, you know, I was thinking a lot about it this weekend, and kind of what I had in my head is similar to two. But a quick question, if we were to, I like the idea of a pilot program as well, so would you suggest the, kind of a temporary ban while we're working on that and put together a working group, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, I think that would be a good option.
And then, in my thoughts of where I was going with this, on a smaller scale, if we were to keep it, in my head I was, you know, 10 permits, 10 grand apiece, you know, that's enough to cover a person to monitor it, all indoors, can we then, if it was an indoor grow, can we say things like, we want the ventilation stuff? We talked about that before, a while back I had asked, is there ways of keeping the smell down? Can we put all those into place as well?
Yeah.
I mean, my thought is, you know, 1,000 square feet, indoor, fans and all that kind of stuff, and like I said, that cost high enough and enough permits to cover a person, and we can kind of get that detailed with that?
Yeah. So this kind of, the kind of information that I'm really hoping from you is stuff like that.
Okay.
You know, the details of exactly, you know, how many permits, how many square feet indoors, it's all stuff that hopefully I can take all of your input, take to a working group, and have them come up with a proposal that makes, you know, hits as many points on your kind of collective list as possible, and then have you vote, if you want to vote on a ban, and then give input to the working group, and then come back with an ordinance.
Can we say medical only on that?
Yeah.
Then going a little bit further, when we go into the homes and the six plants, we can, it's my understanding, we can also kind of control that as well?
We-
50 square feet, is that what I read?
We can, and that, I want to like treat as a separate conversation, because there's been kind of, so we'll do that too. That's a little vaguer is why, I don't have options for you to choose, but we have things to talk about. So we can, you know.
Joel, the interim ordinance temporarily restricting commercial activity, how do you interpret that?
Well, so it would be an ordinance, the board makes findings that says that, in order to protect the public health and welfare, we have to prevent any new development, any new permits, any new use permits, any variances, while the board considers something. You know, usually it's a general plan amendment, you don't want any malls while you're thinking about your general plan, you know, or something like that. And so you're just hitting pause, and you're continuing to work.
So with a state in such a flux, and regulations haven't even been, you know, thought out yet, or much less promoted, if we were to do most of the other options, we could find ourselves in trouble or having to revise them to meet state standards which haven't even developed yet.
Yes, I would expect, no matter what we do with an ordinance, the state isn't going to have it all figured out for a while. We should just kind of factor into the cost, the administrative cost, is the cost of changing it. And so, yeah, if that's a big concern, the burden of changing, the complexity of changing and revising and meeting changes at state level, and I was mentioning case law, then the interim ban to kind of wait and see and ponder makes a lot of sense.
Very good. Joel, since we're going to take this piece, commercial, personal, I'd like the opportunity here from the public on the commercial aspects of this, only at this point. We'll go ahead and have a discussion on the personal side of this after we take public discussion on the commercial aspects of this. So I'd like to open it up for public comment on the commercial aspects of the presentation you just heard from Joel, with any input that you guys feel is appropriate. Don't all be shy. Jesse, I knew you would volunteer.
Hello, thank you guys for sticking it out this evening, and-
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Oh yes, Jesse Davis, third district. Thanks to Joel, I think most of Joel's numbers are pretty accurate in terms of demand for a number of permits, and the direction that I hear him sort of suggesting would be good options. Yeah, I don't know a lot about pilot programs, it sounds, I don't know enough about the details, understand, you know, where the complexities lie. I know Humboldt's first pilot program consisted of the track and trace program through the ag department. I think it was relatively simple, they took volunteers without vetting them, I know several people who received the rolls of stickers, they're like, who wants them, you know, who wants to volunteer? And they ran around tagging plants and kind of, you know, pretending like they were figuring out a system, but I don't think they really came up with much. But I don't really know the facts from the ag department's side about how much money went into it, how complicated it was. As far as indoor versus outdoor, and appropriate locations and such, there definitely needs to be both, it can't be one or the other for commercial production. Indoor production, outdoor production are two entirely different products, totally different markets oftentimes. Different work styles, different everything, hard to compare. So, obviously there's more sensitivities to location for outdoor cultivation sites, but I think in most of the timberland districts, there's not going to be, you know, location issues with nuisance. Indoor will be, there'll be a lot more details to figure out, the mechanical side of regulating indoor commercial. And then the state, it's probably not on target for January 1st, but it's not that far off. I don't think that it's not like years off, you know, I'm thinking maybe six months. There's so much money invested in the counties that have invested millions, and individuals, companies who have invested millions. They're going to make sure that early permits are issued pretty on time. There's proposed regs, regulations that are already published by the Bureau of Cannabis Cultivation Regulation, Manufacturing, Distribution, they're separate bureaus. They've had several public scoping meetings, opportunities, and such, so, you know, it's hard to gauge it, but I think we'll be surprised, actually, when I was watching how Washington State was doing it, you know, they held back for a long time, kind of waiting for federal interjection, and then when they finally got to it, they got to it on time, and it was amazing how quickly they did it, and they didn't have any examples to go by, and California has several examples to run by, and lots of people and money behind it, so I think we'll be surprised how quickly they start issuing licenses in the counties that are ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Public comment? Please.
Hi, I'm Robert Durigo, a Delnart County resident. I think we do need indoor cultivation, you know, it's a big part of the market. Delmore Patients Together will be interested in pursuing a location, and once we know where that location will be compliant, we'll do that so we can better, you know, provide for affordable access to medical cannabis, as far as the flowers go, at least for our members. And I want to point out, like, on November 8th last year, 66% of District 1, my district, precincts 1, 2, and 3, 66% voted for Proposition 64. And 51% of us voted for Roger Gitlin to represent us, the 66% of us, you know, I know it's not your personality, but you were elected for the job to represent us, and it turns out we're booger picking stoners. The only thing on that for options that's in the spirit of Proposition 64 is number four, and we all know it. And we all know the average per capita income beside Crescent City is $10,000 a year. And we've gone back and forth about whether there's money in pot, but I know when they were prosecuting people, they would tell you how much money they thought the crop was worth, you know, so it's funny that we've gone back to a point where like, is there money involved? But again, I would cite, you know, the Yolo County Ag Commissioner cited 2.2 million per acre, and the Lily's bringing about 3,000 per acre. So I mean, still, we're not asking for, you know, adult use shops or anything here, it's kind of funny, really, we voted for this overwhelmingly, and we're not even asking for, we're asking for an old 20-year-old law. You know, and so, my thing is, you know, I've noticed you guys have pretty much excluded agriculture from a lot of the options, you know, that's not, that's not cool. You know, cannabis agriculture should take place in agriculturally zoned areas. Most of the community will be confused as to why the notion of a ban has not been dismissed by the people representing us. It appears that some voices can be louder and never yet recorded, you know, is the only thing I can come to for a conclusion. One of the options, you know, it mentions residential areas, like Delmore Patients Together, we're in a commercial zoned area, but across the street is ag land, and across the other street, I'm not sure if it's residential, there's a few mobile homes, very well kept. The crime in the neighborhood at Elk Valley and Birch is prevalent, there's syringes and crack pipes on the ground quite often, people run out of the bushes to steal things. The little store that's in my shop, in the center, has been broken into 17 times in three years. And so I've reached out to the neighbors around us, you know, and several times I've been approached by law enforcement and our neighbors to access footage, one for a murder in Oregon, you know, as a car went down Elk Valley. So it might be a good thing to have high resolution cameras and a security system there, you know, a good neighbor, because we sure are dedicated to reducing crime in the area, and I think we've made an improvement to the area. So I'd like to see that removed, you know, the buffers to residential areas, are communities too small? I guess I'd probably save the rest for the personal use parts. And one other thing, I'd just like to encourage you all to write our federal leaders, to encourage them to continue the spending rider that has kept the federal government from interfering in 10th Amendment protected activities within the state, and so it expires at the end of the month here. And so you guys are our leaders, you know our intent, because about 60% of us voted, and every precinct, we passed Prop 64 in this county, every precinct. And so I think a representative thing to do would be to write our, you know, up the line and ask to continue the spending bill that has prevented federal interaction.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, guys.
I don't know if this is the right time for me to get up here and say anything, or if I'm even saying the right thing, but-
Please state your name for the-
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Reggie Montoya and I've lived here in Crescent City since 1997. I raised my family here. My son graduated from Delano High School, he's King Cruz. He works at a bar and grill at the Harbor and stuff and he also works for an enterprise that picks up recyclables and cuts people's lives and stuff like that. And also I have a son that's working at O'Reilly's and stuff and he's a very successful manager there and stuff like that. But I've come here to tell you guys that it's obvious, obvious that I'm, no, in no way am I going to be able to make an impact to you guys unless I am able to come to you and tell you how I suffer every day because of chronic pain and stuff like that. And my family has been through hell because of that. And it's really hard for me to come up to you guys and tell you this and stuff like that because I'm a personal guy and I feel like I've come out of a cave to let you know, I have to let you know, you know, that I'm at the mercy of you guys and stuff like that and I'm at the mercy of this community. And my family is asking you guys to do the right, the right thing, you know, and I trust in you that you will. And I trust in every one of you that you will do the right thing when it comes to this. I mean, it's kind of sad that we're slow in the way that we come about in denying that, you know, we have to figure something out to do about chronic pain. We can't just leave it to the doctors to figure this thing out. We can't. It's not up to Doctor Groves to handle everything in this community. We have to throw everything out of this chronic pain thing, that we can't. Because I'm not going to be the only one suffering, believe me, I'm not going to be the only one. Everyone in this household, in this courtroom here is going to have somebody that suffers from chronic pain some way or somehow. And it seems like it's come down to this is what we have to deal with, you know, in our conscience. And I want to come into this place and I want to feel God's presence in here. I really do. I really want to feel God's presence in this, in this Board of Supervisors and stuff because I feel it's more than just making rules and regulations, we're doing with people's lives and stuff like that. A lot of people want to get rich growing pot and stuff like that, piss on them. I piss on them. I want our community to do the right thing. I don't know what the right thing is, but suffering is not the right thing. It's not, there's nothing good about it, nothing good about it. I couldn't even get up today. Robert asked me to come here and be with him. And I will be with him because he's been there for me and stuff. And if somebody, you know, we've got to stop going, we have to put our hands out to help each other. And that's the only way we're going to get through this, is by putting our hands out and stop pointing fingers and figure out something, you know, that's going to be beneficial for the whole community. If we cut certain parts of this out, then, you know, I don't think God's going to be happy with this, you know? I believe that God is, you know, looking down on us and saying, "Do the right thing", you know, and that's all I have to say. You know what? I care about you guys.
Thank you.
I care that you guys make the right decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Hello, my name is Sandy Montoya and I just want to come up here and say a few words about what, well, one thing about what Robert was saying is it's true about finding needles and drugs and baggies all over the ground everywhere in Delano County. I found, I can't even say how much, but I found a lot of that. I find it almost every day, okay? And it's horrible, okay? But I think if the medical marijuana situation, I think it's a good thing in a way, which it is, okay? Because you don't, you don't see, you don't hear about people going out committing murders. I hear more about committing murders and drunk drivers and I hear about all that, all the time and it's just, but I really barely, really hear anything about medical marijuana use, barely, barely anything. And another word I want to put in is when I go to a shop here in town, I see a man and a woman going in there, they're 60, 70, 80 years old going in there for their medication. And they need that medication. I've seen people go in there with cancer, cancer patients going into her shop. They need, they need that medication. They really do. And I'm just asking you guys just to do the right thing and just, and make the right rules and the right decisions and I go along with everybody here in Delano County. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Isaiah Okano. I was just kind of thinking about the permitting issue as far as if you're going to issue such a low number of permits, do we know like the amount of patients that are already in the county that will have to be supplying with the amount of permits that we have, with the amount of cannabis that's able to be cultivated in that space that those permitted, you know, that those permits are allotting? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah. And so I just feel like that's a big thing to go into consideration when you're, you know, looking at the amount of permits that you want to issue. Are the amounts of permits with that space allotted going to fill the amount of cannabis needed to supply the patients in this county? You know, I feel like that's, that should be a main focus for you guys, you know, because that's the main part, is giving the medicine for the people that need it, you know? And, you know, as far as like the commercial aspect, especially the indoor, that should, that should be done in a non-residential area in a, you know, in a business format as well, you know, as well as the dispensaries, you know? So I just feel like that's, that should be a main focus point for you is, you know, are you giving enough space to create enough medicine for the patients that are already here in this county, you know, when you go to do that? So, thank you. That's all.
No, appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Eric Ginter, District 3. I'm just going to kind of go, I made some notes on all the options that Joel had provided and thank, thank you to Joel for providing those. It's a good starting point. I'm going to start with option one, the complete ban. From everybody I've seen since we've been doing this, I mean, it doesn't appear to be an option as an outright ban. The turnout of the citizens, the voices and the faces that have been heard on video, I mean, we've pretty much established our voice. The vote in the state pretty much established where the county stands as a population. And, you know, I think that we do need to figure out how we move forward with that without a ban. Option two just seems like a ban. It's pretty much worded like a ban, it pretty much is a ban. The status quo is not defined. What is the status quo? I mean, is that Prop 215, which ends in January? There's a lot of questions with the option two that I don't think, you know, we've just kind of glossed over, would need to be looked at a little bit more in detail so we can kind of figure out exactly what that means. You know, restricting commercial activity, you know, it's the same as a ban. It's just a veil to hide behind, something you guys can, you know, kind of use to, you know, kind of put this process off a little bit, which given the, you know, the scope of the people that have been here, just doesn't seem like it's be doing the citizens right. The, you know, the state's created these opportunities and they're kind of looking to you guys as local officials to figure it out. It's not an easy process, but they're expecting you to do that. Number three, the limited commercial activity. I just kind of want to start out by saying like, you know, I appreciate the medical aspect of it and a medical only, but when it comes to a business aspect and potentially trying to, you know, infiltrate markets that we may not have access to in Delano County, stripping us of recreational access is going to really hinder our ability to make money. It's going to hinder us to be successful. You know, it's counterproductive to us as business operators, it restricts our access to broader markets that most of our competitors will have. It all the while still imposes all of the same licensing requirements, compliance requirements as a recreational permit would do. It's the same process, the same cost, it's the same product going to a medical dispensary versus a recreational dispensary. I do appreciate the fact that we, we look at recreational as though it may be still somewhat of a sin, but the reality is that is where the state will go and we will be looking in the future to basically flipping most of these medical entities. That has happened in Colorado, it's happened in Washington, it's happened in Oregon, and it's happening in Alaska, and it will be happening in Nevada. They are going to be implementing and basically taking the medical and blending this into recreational because there's really no reason to have two concurrently almost conflicting systems. Recreational can supply a majority of what any medical, you know, situation can offer. It's going to, would be up to the consumer to make that happen. I personally like to see a little bit more canopy coverage capabilities, but I understand the apprehension. If, I just want to quickly say this, if we are thinking we want to try to establish a small specialty cottage, appellationally branded types industry in our county, which seems as though that's kind of the majority vote here, within the citizens anyways, we need to really consider how we operate. Within most of Joel's options, particularly with option three, which seems to be kind of what we may be considering if we are going to allow an ordinance, without allowing the proper supply chain locally with distributorships, transportation, testing, all of the chain of supply, that supply chain, without giving those opportunities to people who may, some of these people here live in ag land, some of these people live in the coastal zone, they may be able to take advantage of an opportunity within that permit structure to be a distributor. It's going to be required. And without that, it leaves us open to having extreme costs to get our product to a place, I mean, just like Joel said, most of our stuff would have to be tested in Humboldt or tested in Trinity or Mendocino County. We're talking, you know, 400 mile trip, which is going to increase costs, which in the long term, no matter what ordinance we look at, we are all business partners, we are a partnership together outside of a pilot program. If we work and you work to an ordinance, we are in this together. And we have to make sure, and you have to make sure, that we can be successful. If you're going to allow this, don't restrict us so much that we can't be successful. It will be a failure on your part, it'll be a failure on the entire county's part because we're going to invest the money and if you guys don't give us the proper platform to be successful, it will fail and you will lose money. And there could be potential political fallout from that. So we want to be working with you. We have been in good faith here every day, a handful and a group of people, and we just want to make sure that we do what the community respects, respect the community, but we also want to be successful. We don't want to fail. So thank you very much and I appreciate all your guys' efforts.
Thank you, Eric.
Hi, my name's Larry Madison. Whether you have a 215 or not, you can't deny that marijuana is a medication. You know, there's, every time I go into a dispensary, I see people able to choose for themselves on what works for them. To me, that's what our country was founded on, on the fact that we get to choose for ourselves. And this is in your guys' hands. I've seen a lot of changes in this community, mostly for the better. And I just hope that you guys keep us in mind, each and every one of us here and throughout the community. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Vanessa Alexander. I am a dairy farmer in the area. We produce organic foods for people like you, for our community and for our region, however big that is. We hope to grow that our region is the West Coast, that our region reaches the Rockies. But I grew up with my parents always telling us to dare to be different and in a household that's really hard and amongst community members, that's hard. But daring to be different in the world that we live in is what will make Delano County different or stand out. You know, there's three other counties that people can go to for commercial use in the area, go up north eight miles, go south 80 miles, not 400 miles. So there's areas that you can go to to get commercial use. I can't speak on medical use because I don't have enough experience in that and I understand those needs, but, you know, 1 o'clock today, I went to a meeting on healthy soils. At 4 o'clock today, I went to a meeting on food insecurity in Delano County. We're trying to better the county by building healthier soils, by building healthier foods and I just don't believe that commercial use of marijuana will better our county, dare to be different.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes public comment on... Sorry.
I'm Stephanie Alexander, that dare to be different mother. I know that the 215 program will roll into the new law and just in our county alone that that needs cleaning up. So I think right now that is, needs to be a focus. I would like to see the ban and watch other counties do what, see what they do and not cost our county a lot of money. We're a small county and to have the staff to do everything and create the ordinance and then the rules come up from, or down from federal or state and then we have to make changes will cost our county a lot of money when we're, have a real small coffers to drive from. So we need to watch other counties and wait and so I'm, we are in favor of the ban. Also, as Vanessa said, there's dispensaries all around. It doesn't take long to see about six of them in Brookings alone. And lastly, my main concern is the kids in our community. It's our kids and I know what the votes were and I know what the state vote was, but I look at the demographics of our county and I'm concerned at the common sense that we have here sometimes when I look at how the kids are suffering, the educational levels and the high school dropout rates. We need to dare to be different. We need to stand for something and I think we need to ban cannabis in our area other than the medical use. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lee Halperin, District 3. I saw you this morning speak about how sale tax are not going up in the county and open one dispensary that people, tourists that drive up and down the coast can just buy their pre-rolled joint on the way and watch your sales tax go up. And they'll stay here and they'll get coffee and a sandwich and a pre-rolled and they'll hang out here and they won't go to another state to buy weed because that's a federal offense. So stop sending people to another state to buy weed. That's not legal. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Greg Gomer and I'm from Chicago, Illinois, which I just moved out here about four months ago. I just wanted to make a point about the commerce, the difference of commerce with this type of thing would generate for this community and the general vibe that I have coming from bigger... and what the, what the potential amount of commerce could be generated here because there is always a lot of tourism comes up and down the 101. And like this lady over here just mentioned about the tourists coming in here and being able to purchase their recreational or medicinal marijuana and be able to, be able to go upon their way. And also to be able to build more of like a, like a culinary culture here to, that could get behind like this type of infusion of marijuana and restaurants and food and seafood and things that kind of back up more of the culture that I feel is already present here in Crescent City. And I feel like the, the culture and the general revenue that would be generated would definitely help this, this area and would help a lot of like the, the lower minority, not minority areas, but seemingly poorer impoverished areas where this is a lot of the crime would be, maybe to give these people better things to do with their time rather than they just get, get high of drugs that are degrading generally rather than doing medicinal drugs. And I, I believe that any form of using marijuana is medicine in one aspect or another. And I just wanted to thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's David Alvarez. I also went to high school here, graduated in class of 90, worked here all my life. But there is a marijuana community here already. So, why not we have a farmer's market of all these people that's already been here? Maybe already, there's already set prices, you know, and, but there's a lack of, you know, medicine for people that are, that really need it. I, I got a State of California Medical Marijuana Identification Card through the, the Welfare Department and, but there's no place to buy it. That, that they, the state recommends here in Delmar County. So, maybe we should have maybe, you know, medical marijuana, a farmer's market for the community that, that need it, or we need it. But anyways, just an idea. Thank you.
Thanks for your time, David.
Hello. My name is Naya Merakami. I need to say, as someone else stated, commercial and medical in many states are blending currently and will likely follow in California. And many low income individuals cannot go even to Brookings, afford the gas to get there, but they need their medicine. And any type of ban really could seriously harm individuals. I have an undiagnosed seizure condition and I have almost drowned in bathtubs, hit my head on pavement, passed out for hours on end, and marijuana is the only thing I have found that helps, that does not have side effects. And I can barely afford medicine as it is, the, when I feel symptoms coming on, to have marijuana around to stop it. And if things are banned enough that I can't get to Brookings, I could, I could end up dead. So, any type of bans, it's not good for people. It really isn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comment then on this commercial aspect. We will have additional public comment on the personal use piece before we close up shop tonight. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board to discuss some of the options that Joel presented and hopefully give him some direction on where he could potentially take this. If we're looking at a ban, if we're looking at an option two or three, which is something in between, I, I don't know what direction this board is going, so like to have that discussion and hopefully at the end of that discussion, give Joel some semblance of direction. And Joel, if you could approach the dais because we may need you with the projector to get back to some of those, those options and so we could see, see it visually on the screen and so can the audience. So, not sure who'd like to kick that piece of the discussion off, but Supervisor Berkowitz.
Thank you, Chairman. This is tough.
Yes, it is.
But you know, I agree with Lori, talking about the option number two, interim ordinance temporary restricting commercial activity, because I think that gives us a wide latitude of how we want to restrict it, what kind, whether we want to severely restrict it, whether we want to make a minor restriction. I think what we can do here is give us the time, and this is reasons other than what Lori gave, I'm really concerned about what the state's going to do. And the state has not really come to bat with this one. They have said that they're not going to make, meet their January deadline and there's all kinds of options that are presented to the state from the legislators. Everybody's got an idea and many of those ideas may be harmful to, harmful to us and harmful to our growers and harmful to the production of marijuana in this community. So, I want to see what the state's going to do before I would like to make a decision on what we're going to do. And that's why I'm thinking that option two might be the best that we can hope for at this particular time.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Gitlin.
Many of you here in the audience have heard my position on this product. It's a problematic product. So, it's not going to come as surprise as what I say. You still, and I'm going to address Reggie, where's Reggie, right up there? You still have your option to grow your six plants, Reggie. And to, to Naira, you have that option too. Naya, I'm sorry. You have that option.
Well, thank you.
Let me, let me, let me say, let me just talk and then, every one of you here has the option in some way, shape, form or another to grow six of your own plants for your own personal use for whatever way you want to use this product, medical, recreational, seasoning, however you want to use it. But what I'm troubled about, and I've gone to five of these seminars, is absent from any presentation, and I hear people talking about medicine and patients. Is anybody here an M.D. here? Is anyone in this audience here an M.D. or comes from the pharmaceutical industry? Do you have any letters in back of you? You have, you have a medical degree in back of you? No, no, just, if, if, just raise your hand. I want to get an idea. You raise your hand. Okay. Okay. All right. So, absent, absent from this presentation, okay, I'm going to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak, please.
Can we call this meeting to order, please?
I can get my doctor in.
Can, can we call this meeting to order, please?
Absent from any of the five presentations is a presentation by anybody who has knowledge on psychocentric drugs and who has letters behind their name where there's credibility attached to it. Now, I've heard your stories and I empathize with you and I understand this. And there are remedies, there are medicines available to be prescribed and I don't want to see you suffering, Reggie. I see you there and it breaks my heart, the man is suffering. That's Supervisor Gitlin, why are you so insensitive to this? But there are, and I can read to you some of the effects of this product on, on our population. So, I, I will, I will say this to you, that we have to look at this product holistically. What are the unintended consequences of bringing this product mainstreaming it, normalizing it into our county? Okay. All right. So-
Reggie, please. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry you are offended by my opinion. I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you. Sir, please. Thank you.
Often what happens is we have, when we try to have a cogent, reasonable conversation, it gets emotional and I understand that. But I do have an opinion and one that is probably shared by Mr. Derigo's comment of you're part of that 33% and Mr. Gitlin, why aren't you part of that 66% after you, and you're, you have, you have a point.
Mr. Derigo, please.
But what I'm looking at is some of the consequences associated with the use of this product and what we're not talking about. And this is what I'm concerned, this is-
Mr. Derigo.
Okay. Mr. Derigo, you had your opportunity to speak and I'm going to say my piece and then I'm going to move on because I'm only one of five members. I, with all due respect to Supervisor Berkowitz, I don't think I need the state telling me what to do. I'm going to do what I think is going to do the right, is the right thing. So, some of you are going to agree with you, some of me agree with me and some of you are not, and that's how life is. But I will say to you that rather than bring to your attention the known outcomes of this product when used and they're sobering, you already know that and some of you will label that as propaganda. I take it seriously and, and I, though I empathize with some of the conditions, I can tell you here, all of you have options in that you can grow and do whatever you want with your own six plants. Nothing changes whether the County of Delmar embraces the Alma Law with any of the options here. That continues. Okay. Okay. That's my, those are my comments.
Thank you, Supervisor. Joel, I've got some questions. Joel, let's try to get some order back here. Got a little derailed there for a second. I do have some questions. Prop 64, summarize it for me, the vote, the 66%, what did it mean?
Well-
What did people vote for?
I, I think what you're getting at is that I have no idea and nobody else does either. Prop 64 was huge. Just because somebody voted for it doesn't mean that they're in favor of everything in it. Did they vote for it because they wanted to be able to use it legally? Did they vote for it because they simply wanted to stop it being criminalized? Did they vote for it because they wanted a massive commercial industry? I don't know, I couldn't tell you.
Okay. And I think that's what I'm getting at because, you know, I, we've discussed this over quite a period of time and there's no question in my mind that everybody, especially folks from District Three have various opinions on this. And there's no question that folks that voted for it in my district definitely voted for use, but when I asked them specifically about commercial aspects of it, that wasn't some of their intent, which I was surprised to hear. So, I said, so what's, what are you looking for? I'm just looking to be able to use and get this out of the pipeline because I believe currently it's very restrictive and impossible to enforce legally. It just curtails any law enforcement effort here. So, we need mechanisms in order to bring it in and reel it in. That's what they're pushing for. Okay. I get it. So, Prop 64, to me, it, it left a lot of ambigu, ambiguous, bleh, I can't even pronounce a dang word right now. The, the bottom line is, is that when I now travel to other parts of the state and talk to my fellow supervisors, they're wrestling with some of these same issues. And in Sonoma in particular, this has been a heck of a challenge. And one of the challenges that they've seen definitely impacting law enforcement is an increase in the murder rate associated with marijuana. And I was surprised to hear that. I was really surprised to hear that, but after it was explained to me by Supervisor Gore in Sonoma County, where 50% of the murder rate is now entirely linked to marijuana use, I was shocked. And just two in the last, just two since I last spoke to him in a month, but, okay. So, the, the issue that he had brought forward to me linked to this was to bring it in-house, bring it in-house and control it. And that's where Sonoma decided to go because they knew there was going to be some scrambling and that's what they've seen with law enforcement. They did embrace, they did embrace a medical piece and some other options. The other thing that I've heard reflected here in previous conversations is that we don't want to open, we don't want to swing the door wide open because we do have growers here that would clearly get pushed out by big money. I've heard that extremely clear from everybody in this room, I believe, that has consistently come to this meeting. The two people I see nodding their head right now are clearly indicating what I've How do we prevent that from happening? Because that is definitely what's happening in Humboldt County, that is what we're seeing now in Sonoma and in San Diego. And I talked to those supervisors and that's what they're telling me. So, it's just not coming through the news. These are people I, I respect. So, we've got some huge issues to deal with. How do we approach that with what Joel's lined out to us? I think he's given us some good options to put some teeth into, where we, we as a county take a slow approach. Monetarily, as some of the things that Eric has approached us with, I'm not, I'm not familiar with Eric's business. I'd like to be familiar with Eric's and I want to know what makes it tick and what doesn't, what breaks you even, what doesn't. But I can't learn that sitting here behind the dais. It has to be done with people that are smarter than me, basically our staff, getting out there on the ground, learning what the impacts to me, or should I say us as a county in our general fund, which we wrestled with for almost two hours today, and an impact to that general fund budget. Because we can't barely even afford to allocate time to various areas, how's that's going to impact us without swinging the door open and forcing you who's lived here a long time and you that have lived here a long time out of this area for big business? So, it's a tough wrestling match and taking a cautionary approach for me is definitely something that we should consider because we don't know how it's going to impact our county general fund specific to public safety and we don't know how it's going to impact our departments. But there's room and opportunity there by not taking a complete ban. It allows us to take some potential corrective action over a period of time that allows us as staff to become educated and the electeds to become educated in the process that I think will be fair and just to everybody. That being said, I think as Supervisor Berkowitz and Supervisor Cowan have expressed something leaning towards an option two, that would allow us to craft some language, Joel, that would explore some of these pieces, working with our growers, working, the growers working with staff and setting some parameters around that would be a good piece. And, and I, I want to mention this medical piece because it's come up from several people in the audience here tonight who are very passionate and emotional about this and I get it. Something there needs to take place. If they don't have the money or cannot afford to drive the, the 20 miles or the eight miles, depending on where they live, to Brookings, then we need to look out for their needs. Mr. Derigo is supplying some of those needs for the locals, but not all of them, I'm sure. But obviously, if this is what's working for you, we don't want to take that right away. If you can't grow it, I get it. Not everybody's a farmer. Not everybody's a farmer. But there's, there's some places that we've got to protect and I think right now, after the two hours of debate over our county general fund budget today and the impacts of that, we've got to take a super cautionary approach on how this is going to impact each of our departments. So, I'll end with that. I'd like to hear from Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yeah. And I have to, I have to agree with both Chair Howard and Supervisor Berkowitz on the, you know, we don't know what the state is going to come up with. Option two seems to be a pretty safe way to go. And I agree that I'm not sure that Prop 64, that vote just said, yeah, you can cultivate all you want. I think, I think using is certainly different than growing or processing. So, I think, I think there's a, a big gap there. So, I think I'd be leaning towards option two.
I do. I'm kind of, I had made some comments earlier about what I, earlier about what I said, but I want to back up and kind of speak for some constituents who aren't here. I appreciate all you guys who've been out here and gone through this with us, but I have to say I've gotten just as many calls on the opposite end as well. So, you know, they are out there as well and it's not completely banned, but concerned like Chris is talking about, what does this mean? I think that's why when I, you know, kind of stated what was in my head, you know, I'm okay with medical. okay with medical. I'm just not sure I'm okay with recreational. I'm pretty much, I'm not. You know, but I understand the medical part of it. But I'm also very, you know, I, I see us, I would feel more comfortable with a conservative approach. We can always loosen it up. I would be scared to try to reel it in. And I guess my question to you guys is, if you're talking about option two, are we going to do that together with a pilot program? Is that what's in your head?
Joel?
What's going on?
Sorry. And, and Joel, you're going to have to help us here because obviously you mentioned with option two, we've got to set some clear direction and focus based specifically on where we as a board see this going. So it can't just be loose. We can't just say we're banning because. We've got to have a reason for it. And, and I think there's, as you've explained, there's several reasons that I've heard here tonight for initial interim ban, moratorium, whatever you want to call it, for now. But what do you need from us, if this is where you're hearing folks lean, what do you need from us here tonight in order to weigh, have us weigh in on?
Well, there'd be a lot of things that would be helpful. For instance, you know, that option three suggests 10 or 20 permits. How much smaller would you want the pilot program to be? You know, option three almost is a pilot program absent some of the kind of RFP situation. If, you know, if we kind of know how big a pilot program, it's easier to take that back to staff and design one.
Sure.
I guess in my head, I was looking at, when I was talking about ten permits, at 10 grand, I, I'm trying to think money of employees to oversee the program. That's where my logic came from as a business, so...
Then what, um...
We could do five at 20.
What I would suggest is working with the people who would run a pilot program.
You're talking about growers or staff?
Staff.
Okay.
And, and try to put together a proposal that's reasonably certain to pay off. If we do too few permits, it might be the same amount of work and not pay for itself. Right? So maybe seven is the magic number, or 12, I don't know. But with the board's direction, that's kind of what I would take to a working group to figure out.
Sure. Would some of the things that we mentioned specifically associated with ordinances, whether it's not in coastal zone, not on ag land, is there, do you want direction on acreage size, number of plants, indoor, outdoor?
Anything that you want to say, I'd love to hear. Because I, I can take it back.
Indoor cooperation.
Yes. That, so, you know, what, the kind of things that I would try to answer with a working group...
Okay.
Are things like what Mr. Davis said about, you know, is it going to be economically viable for the growers if we limit it to indoor?
Because that's, that's what we need to know.
Right? If it's not economically viable, we'll defeat the purpose and might as well expand. Right? If we're trying to foster a local industry and protect local growers, they need to make money. I don't know their, their numbers. Right? So any working group would have to, you know, be, be working with, you know, industry to figure that stuff out. So if you say you want to do indoor only, that's something that we would now know is of value for the board. But we'd then kind of study the feasibility of, you know, will that work for the local growers? And maybe, you know, the working group comes back and says, you know, the board's ideas are incompatible with the local growers, and then, you know, the board's decide, you know, do you want to accommodate the local growers or not? Type of situation.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
Storefronts.
Laurie, could you turn it on, please?
I'm not loud enough?
Yes, I want the people in the home audience to be able to hear you.
It's my understanding something's going to change with that on January, and I've asked this question before, and maybe you guys can answer it. When, when things switch in January, and if we don't have anything in place here, is it going to affect the storefronts that are already in play?
The storefronts that exist now, I'm not exactly sure. I don't know any of them. I don't know how they're operating. But I'm assuming that they're operating under a collective model, and that won't change on January 1st. It'll change January 1st of the next year. They get basically a year of, of a grace period to keep operating.
One of the things that I get the most complaints around marijuana cultivation right now is the smell. And I don't know what a specific acreage size would be, not having residents close, but I'm, you know, I would, if we were to do a pilot program, if we were to, to walk in this with a medical piece, I'd like to see this where it's not impacting the neighbors.
Sure.
There's got to be a minimum acreage size. And I'm not saying the whole acreage is developed, but where it's not, let's say your neighbor, he'd obviously, when he purchases land, didn't anticipate somebody growing X, Y, Z amount of marijuana next door and ruining his, his rights as a landowner. I don't know what that restriction might look like. I have zero idea. But I do know a lot of this takes place up in District Three in Gasky where there's larger grows, even closer up towards the tunnel. So, how do you, how do you wrestle with that piece of it?
You know, I have never smelled a grow. I, I don't...
Do you have no sense of smell? Just out of curiosity.
I, I, maybe I don't, and I don't know it.
Okay.
I do not know that I have no sense of smell. So I couldn't tell you honestly how bad it is.
Sure.
Every complaints, I, I just, you know, people who know more about it than I do will have to help us.
These, these are, these are, yeah. And, and Eric, Eric speaks at least my past experiences with when Oregon went into play, driving Illinois Valley, whether it's Cave Junction, whether it's going over to Gold Hill. It's, anyways, I don't know what, what it would do. But I know I don't want to impact somebody's private property rights with a grow next door. And this is something that we could address potentially with an ordinance with a minimum acreage size for specifically...
Like a five people per...
Or even, or potentially even larger. And, and, you know... Which would address visibility issues, which would address potential nuisance smell issues. Anyways, that's kind of what I'm thinking. Yeah, actually, Jesse, and I appreciate those comments, I think where we're going with this would allow the exploration for some of those questions, I'm going to assume, Joel, would allow for the, really the, the long-term exploration of being able to answer that question. Supervisor Berkowitz?
Chairman, you know, I think what really needs to happen here is we need to have a working group. And, you know, I'd like to see Jesse Davis on that. I'd like to see law enforcement on that. I'd like to see Joel on that.
Community development, Public Human Services.
You know, yeah, I want to see a wide range so that we can finally get some answers to what we need, and yet we can get a lot wider by it.
So, Joel, we need to give you some direction tonight.
Yes. You know, I was going to talk about this at the end after you do the six-plant regulations, but we could talk about it now and just keep it in mind. You know, if you just gave the informal direction to staff to form a working group and figure it out, then, you know, I think you can count on staff to faithfully execute that and figure it out. If you want to do something more formal, you know, you could delegate this to a committee that exists, like the Natural Resources Goal Committee, and have supervisors, and we'll come, we'll come to you and, and deal with this. Or you could, you know, set the roster of, of a board, you know, and put the sheriff on it. But that, that option is, is more likely to potentially be subject to the Brown Act. You know, so is it the board's intention to have this working group work this out in public or have it be something that staff can be more flexible about? Those are all things that, you know, really are up to the board the way they want it to go.
We've got time issues, though.
Well, we do if you want to do something other than a temporary moratorium. If, if the moratorium is what you want to do, we can take our time.
I've heard from this group that we're not leaning towards the ban. We're leaning towards option two, which would be the temporary moratorium. And so you're interpreting that as giving, being able to give you enough time with a study group to ask the questions that are necessary specific to the county on impacts and ask the grower enough questions to see what would maybe fit into a model that we're potentially thinking about.
The moratorium can buy two years. The board will have to extend it after 45 days and then have to extend it at the end of the year. The board can then set a deadline for the working group. I don't want it to be two years, I want it to be three months.
Sure.
And, you know, because it's an urgency ordinance, it's designed to happen fast, the board doesn't have to do it until December. Right? The board can, can, can create a working group and give all of this stuff and see what progress is made in the next month, the next two months. And if it's not where the board wants to see it, then do the interim.
There's just too many unknowns here.
Yes, there are.
There are just way too many unknowns here. We need to ask folks the questions. Because I clearly don't know. And I've got folks on the other side of this that don't want to see this happen at all. So this is going to be a fine balancing act for this county. I think we need to give Joel some direction. I've heard some, somewhat of a consensus, at least on option two. Joel, I'm not sure if you've got enough information to go on on that. Do you think we need to take some kind of advisory vote then on option two? Would that give you some direction on forming, and forming a working group?
Yes. I, I would love the advisory vote on two, but, you know, the mere fact of the interim is, I mean, it sounds like four of you are in favor of it, and that's the requirement's four fifths. Then what we do, you know, what are we going to consider after that is something that doesn't necessarily need to be a vote, but, you know...
Some direction.
Some direction. Something, you know, what is the working you're going to start on? Is it going to look like option three? Is it going to look like option four?
Sure.
Right?
Okay. So, go ahead Supervisor.
Yeah, I, I can see where this is going, and, Mr. Chairman, I'm obviously on an option one path because I've talked to some of the same people, you have a lot of the same people, and I agree with those people. But there is obviously, we're a board of five, and you do have your four votes if you go to the moratorium option, which is option two. I have some significant issues with it, and I'm not going to repeat those here, but they all have to do with how this product gets into the hands of people and how it's enforced in our limited resources here in Delnor County, and all the consequences intended and unquote and intended that are going to come from introducing this product into Delnor County. But I can see that I'm not part of the mainstream here, but I will, I will keep with my core value, which is option one.
Go ahead Supervisor.
And I don't think this takes option one off the table.
It doesn't.
I think it opens the door for any of the options, so it makes the most sense to me, and it allows us to go in any direction after we do some more studying, so...
And, and I do know, and I appreciate those comments Supervisor, I do know by turning a blind eye to this and sticking our head in the sand to allow a black market piece of this to continue here is not going to do any of us any good, and that's the discussions I've had with supervisors to the south of us. You both attended the meetings that Supervisor Cowan and I attended at Humboldt County where those folks spoke to us specifically about this, not sticking our heads in the sand. We've got to embrace this to a certain extent to allow the conversation to take place and do what's right for our community, and more importantly, for our government general fund so it's not impacted. And if we let the black market piece continue, I think what's going to go on is going to continue to get in those folks' hands. But if we could have some semblance of control over how this rolls out, that's how I see this playing out. And I don't know what that looks like, and I'm willing to ask a question.
So if, if the direction I took from the board, the impression, the, the understanding I take from this board, you know, the working group could work on a proposal with some, some premises, right? Premise one, we create a local market sufficient to defend itself from large outside corporations and sufficient to chase out the black market. And that would be like something that they're working on, and so, you know, maybe they are confident that they've kind of solved that problem, maybe they're not, but when they come back, that'll be something that addresses. Another one that I, I've heard you at least say is the gentleman who wanted to know, you know, are, what is the, the medical need based on the permits? And are we going to produce enough for that? If that's a value of the board, or if that's just something the board is interested in, you know, the working group can at least consider and think...
Yep.
How much capacity do we need to be selling at retail to meet the need? And there's interesting things we could do. You know, 215 permits are, are registered.
Yep.
We can at least know the number of them, even if we don't know what each doctor has recommended as an amount.
Sure.
We can approximate. So those are the kinds of things that it seems like the board is in favor of the working group working on, and that's enough direction, I think.
Excellent. Do, sorry Supervisor.
I'm still concerned about the piece of making sure that we are doing enough to take care of what it's going to cost us. I want to look at the, the cost of the county and how that's going to balance out.
And that's making sure all the departments are at the table that are potentially going to be impacted. I heard a long laundry list from John Young when he assembled his folks from Yolo where they thought what departments would be impacted, whether it was the DA's office, whether it was the sheriff, whether it was public safety, specific to health and human services. There's a lot of folks that need to come to the table in a short period of time, and it's a lot of schedules to try to coordinate. But obviously, I think some direction by the board, making sure that takes place. Jay, I'm, I'm, it might be like getting caps together.
Well, Joel's still got some more of his presentation, I think, but if the board does go in the direction they're going in, at this point, I think the focus would then go off of county council in the organization portion of all of this. And if it, if this working group is going to include members of the public, a board of supervisors, anything of that type of situation where it requires compliance with the Brown Act, then, you know, there's, we can certainly organize that through administration. Obviously, Joel would be a player in all of that because of his expertise and assistance, but we would have to come back to the board to try to form something like that and get, and get the buy-in from...
Sure.
From some of the people that we need expertise from, just to get the information that Joel's gone over.
Right. And that's just not the county. You understand that we, I think some direction would be to talk to folks that are willing to talk to us in, in this commercial sector.
So if it's the direction of the board, and we can talk about this after the, the regulations, but if it's the direction or to form a formal body, a former Brown Act subject body that might include a public member or supervisor, whatever the board wants, you know, the direction staff can be to come up with a proposal for that board, I guess, if that's the direction you want to go. And so it's something to think about while we have the regulations discussion. So, are we ready for that discussion?
No, they're timed in the present.
And so, just to be clear, kind of skipping the actual vote on the number two option with the understanding that I got a pretty good idea where the board is and we can come back anytime before January 1st basically and do it. So the reasonable restrictions on personal cultivation, this is where the 215 conversation belongs. Because a co-op or a collective is not a commercial enterprise under, you know, the Prop 64 regime. It is, you know, for personal cultivation, and it's collectivizing various people's personal cultivation into one operation. So, you know, the, the storefronts will continue to operate under the number two, or even under the number one, and it's only under some rules about the six plants that those cultivation, or those co-ops would start to be regulated. So there's some restrictions that the state is already putting on what we can do with those six plants. One is the county may not completely prohibit cultivation inside a private residence or inside an accessory structure to a private residence that is fully enclosed and secure. So we can't tell people, "You can't do it in your house." On the flip side, we can tell people, "You can't do it outdoors in your yard." So if we want to keep it inside, we can. If we want to keep it outside, we can't. Under the code, six plants per resident... Under the code, six plants per residence, not per resident, if you've got, you know, multiple adults in a household, they can't each grow six plants. It has to be kept in a locked space. Doesn't really define what locked space is, that would be an area where if the county's worried about the kind of lock, or how secure it is, or whether the room has windows, those might be things that we can talk about. Not visible by normal, unaided vision from public space. That doesn't cover your neighbors. If they're looking over the fence and can see it, you know, state law doesn't have anything to say about that right now. But if you're walking by on the street, you should not be able to see it. Some examples, I may have just missed one. Oh, there's out of order. Here we go. This is from three other counties. There was a question much earlier in these conversations about how much space six plants actually takes up, and, you know, six plants can take up a huge amount of space because they can get huge. The remedy for areas is to just define how much it's going to take up. If you can do six plants in sixty-four feet, like San Diego, you know, that's eight square feet per plant. Humboldt has it smaller, it's fifty indoors. It's larger if it's outdoors, but you can't combine it. You can't do fifty square feet indoors and then do more outside, and you can't do three plants inside and three outside, stuff like that. In Sonoma, no structure used for cultivation, shall there any exterior evidence? I like that, that's a pretty good blanket. You don't have to say smell, you don't have to say people can't see it, you can't say no signage, just no evidence. If people can see evidence of growth in there, then you're doing it wrong. And then Shasta defines what kind of alarm you need on your, what kind of security system you need. I, you know, I don't know if that ultimately would be worth anybody's time to enforce, but that's, you know, something that somebody's done. Sonoma has a residency requirement. You have to do it on a parcel that has a residence, and you have to be the resident. You can't do it in your vacant lot that you own out in wherever. You have to do it where you live, which is really kind of in the spirit of these six plants anyway. Sonoma also has rules about odor control filtration ventilation systems, adequate to protect odor. So that's not even for commercial, it's just if you're doing it in your house, you need to be, you know, filtering and controlling odor, humidity, mold. And I don't know, you know, the science of what that filtration system looks like, how expensive it is, you know, how hard it is to get, how hard it is to fix, how hard it is to check and inspect, but those are all things that we can get into. Sonoma is prohibiting generators, so if you've got an indoor grow in an accessory structure, you don't have a generator powering your lights. Shasta, you know, rules about the amps for your electrical panel. Humboldt has watts for grow lights. I don't know what amps or watts are, so this is another thing that is best for other Sacramento, the cultivation of marijuana outdoors by any person, including primary caregivers and qualified patients, collect cooperative dispensaries for any purposes prohibited on a parcel. So this is where you start to see the blending of your six plants for recreational use covering into two fifteen. And that is the easiest thing to do, is to just have a six-plant ordinance and say it applies to everybody. It's not an exemption for medical or anything like that. Six plants, everybody's covered, decide what you want to allow. Now that medical patients can buy it from an actual store.
We already have six plants on the state level. Why do you need another ordinance for six plants?
Because those six plants have some very generic regulations on them. The county has specific authorization to put more regulations on them. For instance, state law is not going to tell people they can't do it outside, but we could if we wanted to, and that's what Sacramento's doing here. And at the state level, those six plants are kind of presumptively about recreational, and you still have kind of the decriminalized zone of two fifteen, but counties are, many, if not all counties I've looked at, are combining those into either one ordinance, or it's an ordinance with a higher threshold or something for medical. So there's more local control if we choose to regulate those six plants. San Diego, no person shall plant, cultivate, harvest, dry, or process cannabis outdoors in anything other than a secured structure upon the grounds of a private residence. Goes back to what, you can keep it from being outdoors if you want to. And that's it. So there's a lot of regulations I looked at that I did not bring to the board because I'm not positive they'd hold up. And, you know, these are all ordinances that are kind of vetted. If you want to pick from this list things you like, I think we can do it. If you have other ideas, you know, let's hear them, toss them around the working group. It's going to be people like code enforcement, you know, building inspection, environmental engineers, people who know things and look at things, inspect things, and permit things, are all kind of got to need to say, hey, can we do it? How much time is it going to take? How much work is it going to be? You know, things like that, but the more the board says about what it wants for those six plants, the better positioned that working group would be in.
Can we permit those six plants? Like a license fee so that if we're going to put in ordinance, we have to pay someone to go out there to check on it? Can there be some type of fee associated with those?
I am optimistic that that would work. I don't want to promise you that it would. The lawsuit, the big lawsuit everybody's kind of waiting for, is about a permit. There's kind of this next layer of things about patients' rights, and if you're now permitting things, you're not creating a public record of the fact that they're growing in their house. Does that make them more safe or less, you know? Is that good for us, is that bad for us? Those are all complicated questions that we can look at, but if one of them is, how do we recover the costs of even this six-plant ordinance, then definitely that is something that any proposal from a working group would cover.
Joel, state law is clear that Prop 64 will allow six plants per house to be grown, none of which can be taxed or regulated. That's state law.
Well, not exactly state law.
That's sixty-four, that's language in sixty-four.
You got a code section, you got a citation?
No, I don't, but I've written it down because I looked at sixty-four, it's easy to look it up and see, that's what it says, it cannot be taxed or regulated, six plants.
So it says that local agencies can have reasonable regulations to regulate the six plants.
So it's in contrast with the statement in the Amala. Okay.
That is the statement in Amala, that's the exact language from Health and Safety Code Section that did that. Counties have the explicit authority, but reasonable regulations to regulate the six plants.
Joel, I personally am getting pretty cooked here. We've been going at this quite a bit today, not marijuana specifically, but other items. I don't know if I'm ready to dive into this piece, picking certain counties and what they're doing on this. Do you absolutely need direction on this, this evening, this personal use piece?
I don't absolutely need it. What I would love most is direction on a working group. That's the next thing to actually go and do for us, and we can keep talking about reasonable regulations at other times.
I think there's at least enough direction from the board, at least from four of us, to give you direction to get a working group together. I think, Jay, are you pretty clear on that? Do we need to take a vote, Council?
I think, I don't think you need to take a vote if the consensus is there, and it would be a direction to administration.
I don't know if there's complete consensus on it right now to form a working group.
To form the working group?
No.
Do we need five for consensus?
It's not really, it's not really defined, so it's just a direction to staff at this point, and staff would be looking into the options that you all have mentioned about whether or not there might be a board member, whether or not there might be more than one board member, whether or not there might be public members, and that, you know, the conversation will change and either be public or staff, depending on the type of working group that you create. So that will need to be agendized further for something like that to exist.
From the discussion tonight, it seems obvious if we go in the direction of a working group, you're going to want public members, and I'm hearing indoor growers, outdoor growers, commercial, at least three at that point, if we can get people who are available and offer up their time, along with county departments. The county departments are a little bit easier to get people involved because we can coordinate those schedules a little bit easier, but if you want a board member on there, we'll give you that option.
Sure.
We have to come back with an agenda item to form that committee.
We do.
So next meeting? It has to be on that.
And the board could do that as part of a regular board meeting, you don't necessarily have to have another marijuana workshop to do that.
Just hope to give you some direction tonight, Joel.
No, you know, the direction of what you want us to put on that next agenda is what we need.
Very good.
So if you say, give me, you know, a formal body that has open meetings and there's public members on it, and a board member or two, that's what we'll create.
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
Yes, that's.
So we'd have to ask the sheriff, right, that we can have Ag Department?
You can direct staff.
Can't direct the sheriff.
You can't direct elected officials.
Exactly.
I'm sure he'll participate.
So we want, we certainly want the Ag Department and Code Enforcement and CDD.
Yeah.
Health and Safety. We'll get a list together and hopefully we won't miss any staff, but at this point, because it's going more in administrative process, Community Development Department's got about half of those, so we'll be talking.
Very good.
And to be clear, board members?
I don't know if it's necessary at this time. Do you? Put your gut on this, guys. I know you're Roger, but.
Well, I'm quietly listening because the process of thinking this out, and obviously I'm not in the majority on this issue, which is fine, I can respect one another's difference of opinions on this product. I would like to see someone on the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Chairman, or on this committee, because we're crafting the ordinance, so I'm pretty sure it's not going to be me, but that's okay.
Why not?
Well, look, I know how to follow rules, and I do, and I understand that, with four-fifths vote, you don't need the fifth person. So if you're moving toward option two, which is a moratorium and interim ban, which allows us to rethink this process along the line, and just as Supervisor Hammingson mentioned, it may very well be that we might learn some things that may direct us to option one. That's a possibility, and I don't know if that will happen, but I certainly think someone from this Board of Supervisors, and perhaps even the City Council, I guess, even though they have their own governance, and probably nothing we would do would affect that, but I think somebody from this Board of Supervisors should be on this working committee.
Well, I'm not hearing a consensus on the board members, so I'm thinking we'll come back with various departments and two or three spots for the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're not going to take action on three tonight, Joel? That was pretty clear, correct? Thank you. All right. Obviously, this discussion hasn't ended. Do we need to open it up for public comment again?
I think so, since you said that people were going to get public comment on that, even though there's no action taken.
And on the personal use piece, and I think it's fair. Eric, you're up first. No worries.
Eric Enther, District Three. I'd like to offer up any of my time to be part of the working group if you guys so would have me. I think I could be a great addition to helping to craft something that's going to be really respectful to the community.
Thank you, Eric.
Sure.
If you could please contact, make sure Joel or Jay has your contact information. Please, please approach the dais, and I know everybody wants to go home and eat dinner
My name's Roger D'elia. I just wanted to reiterate something I, one of you board members read at one of the previous meetings, about $1.2 billion that Trump was giving to states for funding. As well as that, I wanted to clear the air, because everyone kind of got upset over this whole, like, marijuana being the cause of someone getting hurt. You know, like, I'm part of this system, which has problems, which are the problems we have created ourselves. I mean, don't do this, I don't like this, like, we've done this, we did this ourselves. So I really do think that it needs to be said that we don't like that. People, part of this system, I don't like seeing people get hurt. What I do with this thing does not, in any way, shape, or form, have any direction that way. So people will get weeded out. We're all, we're all turning our thought process into a more caring, loving place for us to live in. We don't want to see that, we don't want them people around us. Rules, regulations, everything that we're trying to establish right now, we'll weed these people out, bad guys don't like to follow rules, like, it's a serious thing. That really, I took that personal, like, I really did, like, I'm out here killing people and stuff because I want to smoke some pot. That's ridiculous, man, I spent eight years in the military, don't tell me about killing people. Like, we don't want it, we don't want that. That's not, and so we keep talking about it. I got up this morning, my brother read something this morning, a kid from Michigan, eleven-year-old kid, shot his mother because she wouldn't let him keep a puppy. People die every day over stuff, like, all types of stuff. Hammers fall out of the sky, literally, on top of people in the history, like, you know, I know that's happened, stupid stuff happens. We don't want this, we don't want that, we don't want that a part of our system, so that's not something that is, like, going to keep being in there, all right? So I just, I really do thank everyone for their time and stuff, and that, you know, that touchy subject not going further than what it is, I want everyone to get along. I understand that we don't like everything about each other. We will get along, because we will, that's what we do, all right? So I just encourage, I offer my time, you know, for anything that we need that can be beneficial towards this, just to help us get along a little bit better.
Thank you very much.
And that's it.
That's awesome. Thank you. Robert? Come on down, Robert. Sorry, the other Robert.
Yeah, that's new to me, weeding it out, but thank you.
I apologize for my outburst. I would like to make part of the record that the board has received two letters from physicians that I'm aware of, Dr. Diane Dickinson and Dr. Russell Nichols of Smith River, and should be several others that I've encouraged to write in, so, you know, I think, you know, maybe a little bit of misinformation there. We didn't really get into it, the one thing, there was a lot that I think is really workable and reasonable with what you guys had put together for potential restrictions on personal cultivation. I think that the permission slips from landlords, you know, kind of hearkens back to white landowners, you know, have more benefits and all. Of course, landowners feel free to ban pets, to ban cannabis, I don't think it's something that the county would, you know, I think it would be unreasonable really to take up that, and you're not going to take up, you know, other more dangerous things. And I would like to volunteer for the advisory committee or the work group.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Please, Reggie.
My name's Reggie Montoya. I just got one last thing to say. I think that our system of, back in 1996, me and my wife had petitioned for the two fifteen program and stuff, and we were in Sonoma County at the time, and we had a lot of senior citizens coming up to us signing the petition, everything, and a lot of disabled people, but I think that the greatest idea I've had yet is that this part of the system where the disabled people are allowed to be in control of their own destiny of the two fifteen thing, and we should be running the whole system. The people that are disabled can run this system, and we can get ourselves out of disparity, out of SSI. We can run this system, we got brains up here. We can do it, but we got to have the backing behind us, we got to have the system. I'm not full of shit, I, my dad was a plumber. I worked my whole life, I just got sick. It can happen to anybody. I didn't ask to become addicted to pot or anything like that, but I am, and it helps with my, I can't take narcotics, I can't, I can't take narcotics. I can't, I can't take narcotics. The doctors won't give them to me. The only thing I can take is Suboxone. And I can't grow because I'm too disabled. If I could grow, I wouldn't be disabled. People that are growing aren't disabled. They're full of shit. They are full of shit. They're not disabled one bit.
Reggie, please, the language. Thank you.
No, they're not. I'm sorry, they're not, though. They are pulling the wool over your eyes. People that you think are disabled and stuff like that, we're the true people that are being affected by all of this and stuff because this was meant to be for us and stuff. Everything was structured around 215. I don't know where it got to be recreational, you know? It is a deterrent to, and none of my sons smoke pot. None of my, my son there and my other son don't smoke weed. I use, they realize it is medicine. I'm using it to control chronic pain. And us people that are disabled should be running the system and pulling ourselves out of disparity for this reason right here. This could be the rescuing, our county could be the first one to do this. We could be the first ones to say, "No, we're not going to do what everyone else is doing, but we're going to figure out something that puts back into the system." Really does. You think that putting money in, people that are running the commodities and stuff like that, that are growing the big systems, they're putting all the money in their pockets. They're not doing one iota for my family.
Thank you, Reggie.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your comments. Okay, seeing no more public, personal use.
Jesse Davis, separating my comments to personal use here.
Thank you.
And also trying to keep my personal views separate, although it's difficult. And I do appreciate Roger's personal opinion. Sometimes they feel a little over the top in the setting, but I appreciate honesty from any direction, really. Prop 64 and what people voted for and such, personal use comes from commercial supply. That's realistically, I mean, it's not what it's called now, but that's where it's going to come in the future. So regardless of, if you never thought of the commercialization of cannabis when you voted for Prop 64, you're thinking of using the product and you want it to be legal, but it has to come from somewhere. So let's keep that in mind. Murder stats, I don't know a lot about them. I don't think use contributes to murder statistics, but definitely illegal cannabis businesses contribute to murder statistics hugely. I've been personally affected by it, and it's awful. So true, but can be misleading. We need to understand. That's what we're trying to correct. We have one more year, like Joel said, under this collective model, so I think the approach we're taking for taking time functions fine for the existing businesses, the dispensaries, the cultivators. There's time to continue functioning, staying in business while things pan out. And then there's still some confusion I hear. Commercial is not recreational. They're not, that's not what Prop 64 really was. It's not. I hear them used synonymously, recreational and commercial. And it's, there needs to be an understanding of the separation. You know, there's medical and recreational, and there's commercial under all of those. So I think that needs to be considered. And then I think it really is important, and I'm not making fun of it, I think we should dare to be different. I think families like the Alexanders who speak for a big part of the community, it's important to consider. And I think we really are doing this differently. We really can be different. There aren't probably any other counties that have done it right. I'm not saying that we will, but I think we can be the closest to doing it correct. Thanks.
Words of wisdom. Thank you, Jesse. Please.
Aaron Mathis.
Nice to meet you.
Lifelong resident of Delmore County. Recently resigned from Delmore County a couple months ago to pursue organic fertilizers and soils and stuff like that. And just wanted to bring light over all the, the time that I did gathering of information and contributing to the betterment of our county, I didn't see much cannabis use being a problem when I was creating treatment plans and whatnot like that or working with the youth. We, our, we're going to look at cannabis as a drug. We can all agree that we've evolved from, our criminal population is not choosing cannabis to facilitate their crimes. It's, we can all agree that we have a heroin, we have a methamphetamine problem. And when I talk about that, I see that they populated our industrial zones, the meth users and the homeless folks. And why are these, why are these empty lots being able to just be blight and camps instead of maybe a processing plant of some sort? Be out of the community's eye for the most part unless you're driving down Elk Valley. We're going to talk about the smell. I'd like to contest with, let's drive through Fort Dick. Any time of the day, let's drive through Smith River right now. And if you like the smell of cow manure, that's what you get. Cannabis might be offensive to some who don't like it, but if you like it, you love it. I think the stigma attached to cannabis is stuck in our county. And there's some very successful, very intelligent individuals that use it on a daily basis that you probably wouldn't know. I hope that you lose your fear and that you cash in on this and collect what you can because it's going to grow. It's going, you know there will be the black market, so you should get in on it while you can. The people, the people that are going to follow the rules are going to be here with you, helping you. And the others are going to do what they do. The people that follow the rules care about the earth. I'm sure a lot of the people in here that cultivate use organic fertilizers. They're probably not using synthetic. I just, I, I hope we can make the right decision as a county. Appreciate you all. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comment. Okay, any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Joel, you have direction, correct? Very good. Staff? Liz, are we good? Very good. All right, unless there's further comments from the board, I'd like to adjourn our meeting to... Very good. Thanks for your time, everyone. Appreciate your input.